Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. I will call to order the North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Leibold.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sidig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes to my knowledge. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Second.
By Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is set. Item four is our consent agenda. It looks long, it's not complicated. Are there... Can I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions about this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our consent agenda passes. Item five is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council questions or comments that are not already on our agenda tonight, now is the time. I will close the public comment time and move on to item number six, Josiah, which is our engineer's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Construction update for y'all. South Fiber Project was just awarded. The pre-construction meeting actually occurred yesterday. That contractor is going to get started right away on several phases of that work, including getting the fiber path and fiber optic out to Centennial Park for the event center. That has a mid-July completion date for that phase, so they're going to get started right away. Next up, two updates on the Interstate 380 and Penn Street Bridge and Interchange Project. One, I already reported at the last meeting that the northbound ramp is closed, the northbound on-ramp. If you've driven through there, you may have seen signs, but they are going to close the southbound off-ramp. So if you're coming from Cedar Rapids and you want to get off on Penn Street, that ramp will also be closed starting July 1. So both... They're now closing both ramps at the same time. So again, starting July 1, if you're coming from Cedar Rapids and you want to get off on Penn Street, that ramp will be closed. The detour for both of those closures is the same. You'll go down to Forever Green Road exit, go over the bridge, and come back up to Penn Street. So that's one. The second thing was, there's also going to be some lane shifts, and you may have noticed this at Kansas, Penn Street and Kansas intersection there, as they're doing some pavement repair and new paving up to the bridge. Two more, Freedom Park Trail. That's a relatively small construction project, but it's going well. They're doing a good job keeping their tight... Their site tight to the work and not spreading out all over the parks. That's great to see. Paving of that new six-foot-wide trail scheduled for mid-July. And finally, North Liberty Road Trail. There was some action out there on Monday with paving some of Penn Street, paving some more curbs, paving curbs up on the hillside. And then there's a lot of grading work going on in front of the dog park. That's where they're widening the roadway for that outside lane to be widened, to create that space for the left turn lane and the median crossing. So that's also coming up in the next few weeks. That's all I have, Mayor. Counsel?
Thanks, Josiah. Did you say the southbound off-ramp is going to close July 1?
The southbound off-ramp is going to close July 1.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
So what... That seems like a change.
It is. It is a change.
So that came from DOT? And what's the reason for the change of closing two at a time?
It did come from the DOT. I think they're looking at their schedule and what they can get done this year, and they're always trying to figure out what they can do to get the most done as quickly as possible, so.
Josiah, any idea on how long that will be closed, the southbound? The northbound is anticipated about three months.
Yeah, we still hear the same thing about both ramps, which is two to three months from the time it's closed to get it regraded, prepped, repaved, and back opened.
Thank you.
Is the North Liberty, the trail, is that on schedule? Seems like they may have... I just drive it every day, so it seems like they may have hit a hiccup or something, but...
We're always asking them about schedule. They've got a paver out there for the trail section. Once they get going on that, that's just a couple days, so I'm not too concerned about that. The work in front of the dog parks, they started about a week later than we had hoped they would, but that's all I have at the moment. So there's still time in their schedule to make that up and get done on time.
Thanks.
Ryan, I'll move it over to you. Item, city administrator's report.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to let this group know that the mayor and I traveled to DC a couple weeks ago for just a couple days with the corridor group. This is an annual trip that we make together with Cedar Rapids Economic Alliance, Greater IC, the university Kirkwood, and then a handful of cities from both the north and south corridor. Corville and Iowa City were represented, as well as, of course, North Liberty. We had an opportunity to meet with Senator Grassley and Congresswoman Miller Meeks. We were also able to meet with Senator Ernst's staff, but she was unable to devote some time for us. As you might imagine, with that large of a group, there was a bunch of topics that we discussed. We were able to, we being the mayor and I, and Kelly Hayworth, were able to talk specifically about Forever Green Road to all three of our representatives. And Representative Miller Meeks understands that we'll be making another request to the Community Projects Program, formerly known as earmarks, through her office. Obviously, their last year's projects were delayed, and so they're... Which we didn't have a project in there, with the money that we were already allocated, we have received or are receiving. But her message was similar to what we've heard before, and she'll continue to support the community impact program, but she's not sure how that funding will look from, let's see, the both House and Senate, and then, of course, the president has to sign off on that. Some other topics that we talked about, research funding, of course, the university was very much involved in that, and Iowa City was talking about the Burlington Street Bridge project. And then in the northern corridor, they really focused on Tower Terrace Road and had, I think, four cities there in support of that project. It was a quick trip. I think we were out there for less than 48 hours, but we had a productive day of meetings on Thursday, and not only were able to visit with the representatives themselves, but also their staff, which can be quite helpful back home when we run into a snag or need something. If I missed anything, you can...
No, you did a great job. I appreciate that.
Just two other items of note here. You should have all received from me an email with the social service scoring rubric, social services scoring rubric, and we're asking for that to be returned to us by July 14th, and we'll have that on a... As a discussion and an action item on the... At the July, I believe it's going to be July 26th meeting, that second meeting in July. And then lastly, by the end of this week, you will have in your email box the fire station study. We want to have... Want to make sure you have ample time to review that, and we'll have members of the SHIVE team, as well as chief plots here, July 8th, to have discussion on that study and talk about next steps. And that's what I have this evening.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? I'll move on to item eight is the mayor's report, and the only thing I'll add to Ryan's comments about the trip to DC is that it seemed like an odd year. Didn't seem like we would get much done, who would be listening to us, and I voiced that a couple of months ago at a local Greater IC event that I was invited to. But when you're there, and as Ryan mentioned, you're having a face-to-face conversation, not necessarily with our elected people, but their staff members, who tend to be the ones that do the actual work, that was face-to-face conversations with them, are really helpful. And they're helpful in understanding how to better apply for grant funding. They're also helpful if that staff person doesn't know something specifically about your community or the projects that you're working on. So it's... There's a lot more to be gleaned from that trip than just talking about the projects that we're doing and asking for funding. And more importantly, I think the relationships that we build with those that went locally are always enhanced by being a part of this trip as well. It's ironic that you go 1,000 miles to get closer to the people that you live minutes away from, but it is a really helpful trip for that part. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report on activities, other than to move on to a proclamation that I have for Pride Month. Admittedly, this is a little bit late in the month, but nonetheless, this is when that request got to us. Whereas Pride Month is celebrated each June to honor the resilience, courage, and contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community commemorating the Stonewall uprising of 1969 and the ongoing pursuit of justice and equality for all. And whereas LGBTQIA+ individuals have historically faced and continue to face systemic discrimination, social stigmatization, and erasure in public, private, and institutional spaces, resulting in disparities in health, education, housing, employment, and safety. And whereas professional research, including studies by the Human Rights Campaign and the Williams Institute at UCLA School of Law, underscores the disproportionate impact of these inequalities on the LGBTQIA+ communities, particularly those who are Black, Indigenous, people of color, transgender, non-binary, and disabled. And whereas the city of North Liberty, Iowa recognizes that advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion is essential to creating a city where all people are valued, respected, and able to live authentically without fear of prejudice or discrimination. And whereas I affirm our commitment as a city to fostering a welcoming and inclusive environment by uplifting LGBTQIA+ voices, protecting LGBTQIA+ rights, and ensuring representative representation in civic life, public policy, and community leadership. And whereas the community is dedicated to advocating for equity and inclusion across all entities, all identities, and whose vision is for North Liberty to be a community where every person thrives, belongs, and is celebrated, and whose mission is collaboration and connection so we can celebrate diversity, advocate for our neighbors, amplify voices, open hearts to our common humanity, and cultivate a culture of kindness. And whereas celebrating pride is not only an act of visibility, but also a call to action to continue the work of dismantling the structures of oppression that harm LGBTQIA+ individuals and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Chris Hoffman, mayor of the city of North Liberty, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Pride Month in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. I encourage all residents, businesses, schools, and organizations in North Liberty to join us in honoring the history, struggles, and triumphs of the LGBTQIA+ community, and recommit to the shared values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'll move on to item nine, which are council reports. This is an opportunity for council members to let us know what they've been doing in the community on our behalf.
The only thing, I guess we'll start on this end. The FEMA has approved the hazard mitigation plan update for the county, and that will should come through to be looked at by everyone fairly soon. And then, once that's all in place, and if... Hopefully, we'll never need to use any funds, but we would then be eligible for funds for disaster recovery. That's all I got.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor attended Better Together 2030 quarterly meeting, talked about annual budgets and projects on all the pillar work that's occurring. On the conversation about Burlington Street, I would just say publicly to our friends in Iowa City, I would call for them, and we are going to make that request through BT 2030, that they at least take a look into the possibility of some pre-work to that low-head dam, if there's ever a time to maybe look at making that river more user-friendly for recreation as they tear out Burlington Bridge. Now's the time to take a look at that, and certainly would, you know, offer up BT 2030's pillar and folks in our organization to assist in those conversations with the Iowa DNR and others. Think Iowa City's meeting on Thursday, I'll be attending, and then I do want to call out and thank all heating and plumbing and Woodruff Construction for working with Parks Department and North Liberty Corville Youth, Baseball, and Softball for installing a water bottle filler at Penn Metals Park. It's been a long time coming. It's been an ask for a while. Help us eliminate plastic waste to our landfills and have water that is not for sale. So appreciate that work.
Thanks for calling that out, Brett.
Anything else?
So I wasn't here last meeting, so if I could, I'd like to at least comment on the local option sales tax. As always, you know, great ideas and great discussions from the council and the mayor. I appreciate Greater IC for, you know, all their efforts, particularly in promoting the cities, you know, trying to work together on this issue and other issues, too. Couple items I wanted to just touch on, and I'll be reiterating what was some already discussed, but, you know, the fact that 93% of all Iowa communities have a local option sales tax. That's... I feel like we're missing out there. They benefit greatly from it, and that's including Tiffin, University Heights, Solon, Swisher, so, you know, right around us. Also, just to reiterate that basic necessities are exempt, like groceries, utilities, gasoline, hotel and motel rentals, prescription drugs would not be subject to that local option sales tax. It gets primarily paid for, I know Brett mentioned this, you know, by visitors from outside the county, to the tune of... Which was a wild number. I'm sure Caitlin Clark had something to do with that, but, you know, 5.1 million people spending $481 million in Johnson County. That's a... That's a big number. Also, I love, you know, as a city, we're supporting local business and their growth, but... And I'm also interested in helping attract, you know, bigger businesses and good jobs for North Libertarians. So it sounded, you know, like the workforce, housing was an issue that, you know, may be holding back some of the bigger companies from calling North Liberty home. So I personally would be supportive of the 20% towards housing. And I also loved Council Wason's idea of, you know, potential joint project with Corville. I think that could work great. Our local municipalities, you know, can be facing some financial challenges, particularly the growing cities like ours, and due to the upcoming property tax legislation. So I feel like this is a good opportunity, and it's needed. On another note, the bond sale, the fact that we sold or saved a million dollars from what was projected, you know, I just thought it was a testament to how well North Liberty's ran, you know, and how that cost got down because people were... I understand that, how that works. People were bidding on that process, and, you know, she mentioned it, and I just was like, wow, that's incredible, and I just wanted to give a shout out there. And then lastly, I appreciate the extra time here, but to congratulate AARP and the Iowa Association of Realtors for their advocacy in passing the accessory dwelling unit legislations, and I think that'll be, you know, a huge blessing for people that need it and a win for private property rights. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I don't have that much, just compressed last couple of weeks, but I was able to attend the Let Love Fly event in Centennial Park. And so just a couple of things that I wanted to comment on regarding that. First and foremost, thank you to our staff and for all of the North Liberty City Slate events that they put on throughout the course of the summer. It does make North Liberty a very welcoming destination for everyone. It was really encouraging to see the number of families out there. This is just one of those events that highlight the focus on the family that we have here in North Liberty and how it continues to grow, so I'm very thankful for their efforts. In addition to that, I just wanted to say thank you to the North Liberty sponsors of our City Slate event. Without their efforts, without their financial contributions, without their commitment to North Liberty, all of these City Slate events wouldn't be... This simply might not exist. And so I would encourage our residents, our guests, to patronize those local sponsors when they can and as often as they can, because it is a driver of how we grow intentionally here in North Liberty. So I just want to say thank you to those two groups. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, I just have a couple of things. Just one thing, not really anything to report, but I do want to thank Ryan Hyer and Michael Pentecost and Chief Plots and Captain Hudson for spending some time with me on Thursday morning. I got to see the inside of Centennial Center, which was really... It's an amazing building. It's coming together well. I got to see the remodeled streets area, which looks really great, and I know is much more functional than it was before. And I got to tour the training area that the fire department uses, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do those things.
Thank you, Eric.
If I might, one other thought there. Congratulations to the North Liberty Food Pantry and all of those contributors who helped make that project stand up. It's great to see, I drive by every day, to see the new facility, the new buzz in the town about what's available to our citizens. There is a ribbon cutting, I believe, coming up in July at some point, so make sure folks are aware of that. But to get that project from ideation phase into actual implementation and up and running is no short... Is no small feat, and really proud of their efforts, proud of those that contributed to that, and thank you to the residents and those who support that wonderful organization.
Thank you. Hi, Abby. You are up next. I intend as the youth council presentation.
Awesome. Hello, Mayor Hoffman. Hi, councilors. For those I have not yet met, my name is Abby Cobb. I'm the outreach and access coordinator here for the city of North Liberty. As part of my role, I have the pleasure of working with the youth council, and we've got a few of them here today. This is a group of high school students that live and/or go to school here in North Liberty. The 2024-2025 cohort was comprised of eight students from Liberty, Regina, and CCA. North Liberty Youth Council meets as a group twice every month and as needed to facilitate their projects and events. I have come to know this cohort as collaborative, compassionate individuals with great senses of humor and even greater aspirations. I have witnessed the group's hard work come to fruition on several projects and events. From leisure to social service volunteerism, North Liberty Youth Council members model steadfast dedication to our community here. We are very proud of this youth council, and I want to give a special thank you to our two graduates, Asher Bonner and McKenna Kelly. Asher and McKenna led various projects of their own over the last three years and both served with enthusiasm and creativity. We will deeply miss them, but we wish them the best of luck in college, and neither of them are here with us tonight, unfortunately, but they'll be missed. I'm going to have three of our youth councilors now read the State of the Youth letter to you all, so I'll let them take it away and share a little bit more about what youth council has accomplished this year. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Vincent, and I go to Liberty High School.
Hello, Mayor Hoffman and North Liberty City councilors. My name is Sophia Jin, and I am a rising senior at Liberty High School. I served on the North Liberty Youth Council my junior year, and I will continue serving on the youth council my senior year. I joined the youth council to give back to the North Liberty community and amplify the voices of North Liberty youth.
My name is Chiwan Kim. I'm going to be a rising sophomore at Liberty High School.
So now we will read our State of the Youth letter. Dear Mayor Hoffman and North Liberty City councilors, as our busy and impactful 2024-2025 term ends, North Liberty Youth Council would like to share a little bit about who we are, provide highlights of what we have been up to over the past year, and present some thoughts on how best to support young people in North Liberty. From community collaborations to North Liberty Youth Council initiated projects, we addressed important issues in our community this year. We supported our neighbors by volunteering at the North Liberty pantry, we took part in the Parks Department's annual Muddy Creek cleanup, and we ran our own hygiene product and school supply drives. While the end of the year school supply efforts are still underway, we collected 134 pounds of hygiene products and donated them to the pantry in February. North Liberty Youth Council planned several recreation events for fellow high school students, younger children, and families in North Liberty. We hosted a high school pickleball tournament, middle school flag football tournament, teen hour during glow mini golf, and earlier this month, we hosted a bike repair and washing clinic on Old Town Plaza with Sugar Bottom Bikes and the Bike Library. These events offered fun activities for youth here, raised money for area nonprofits, and gave us the chance to showcase our skills and interests.
In addition to our recreational opportunities, the North Liberty Youth Council offered educational events and communication programs, like our ongoing Penn Pal program with Wasatch Library in Utah, pizza and politicians, and our monthly newsletter. From January to May, we hosted monthly STEM PAC seminars at the library for upper elementary and middle school students, where we gave lectures and led experiments on chemistry, biology, math, computer science, and physics. North Liberty Youth Council activities don't stop just because the school year did. We've enjoyed participating in Let Love Fly and look forward to supporting city events all summer. In August, we will pack backpacks full of the school supplies we've collected and distribute these bags to area kids at the Ready Set School Event with United Way, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Salvation Army. This year, the youth council was proud to be recognized during Better Together 2030's Excellence in Action Awards. We received a Sizzle Award for representative leadership for engaging high school students in civic leadership and community service, fostering the next generation of local leaders.
When asked about ideas for city council, the most prominent theme among youth councilor suggestions was creating free spaces and activities geared to middle school and high school students. Whether it is volunteer service activities or recreation, we believe teen-specific programming is important for us to feel a sense of belonging and safety here. One youth councilor proposed the idea to create a public mural collage to increase belonging and awareness for mental health challenges among teens. Other suggestions include a more accessible mental health support for young people and more regular collaboration with the North Liberty Youth Council and city councilors to ensure youth perspective is heard. One of the guiding principles of North Liberty Youth Council is the advocate for kids of all ages here, and will believe that one of the most effective ways to do this is through collaboration with our city leaders. Thank you for the chance to share what we have been up to and for your continued support of North Liberty Youth Council.
Abby, I just wanted to say, looking at that report, we see how much work you guys do over the years, but putting it in a report like that was remarkable. When this group started three years ago, when Asher and others started that, they were just having these ideas on what they could do in bringing the youth and teens into our community like that. So not only have you brought it into the community, but you've done so in a way to highlight the needs still for our teens and our youth. So, and the way that you're giving back and bringing the younger people into our community is a real testament to the sizzle that you bring to this community. So thank you all very much for being here tonight. Public speaking is not easy, and for what you're doing and volunteering throughout the school year. I'm sure others have a few comments as well.
Mayor, watching the evolution of this group for the last three years has been impressive. It's been fun to watch. I'm hoping that in the next year, we can see a little more of you in this chamber and more frequently, because the things that you guys are doing are very important, and the voices that you have with your teammates, with your classmates, you are leaders, and we need to hear from you. This report is... Summs up an entirety of a year, and it was impressive to see everything that you guys did, but we want to be here and show support for you every month of the year in all of the things that you're doing. So I would say, and challenge the leaders... So I would say and challenge the leadership to not be afraid to come meet with us, working with the mayor on agendas, letting us know what you're up to and what you need from us and support, so that we can help be your voice, because you're being the voice for the youth and the community, and we want to help you be that.
Just way to go. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for being involved with the youth council. And I hope that you continue all the things you're doing now on into the rest of your life. It's awesome what you're doing, so keep up the great work. Appreciate it.
So yeah, I appreciate your guys' input. I'm hard to believe, but I'm slightly older than the rest of these guys. And my children are like, could be your parents. So I appreciate you guys coming and letting us know how things are going at this current day and age. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just echo the comments that have been set up here already. Just a very job well done. Thank you for your continued efforts and agree with Counselor Smith on the challenge. Let us know where we can help you, when we can help you, and continue to put forth the effort that you have. It is noticed, it's appreciated, and whatever we can do to expand and support your efforts, we'll certainly try to do that. Thank you.
And I'll wrap up by saying, Abby, we do need to make this a regular occasion, a visit. As Counselor Smith said, I'm lucky enough that I get to see this group once a year, but these guys don't. And having regular attendance, it's just another thing for you to come to. But if anybody wants to be part of the agenda, let's just have one person come once a month, something like that. It's going to be great to hear from you. All of these things were just a flood of wonderful information that we saw in your report. So knowing what you're doing, and as others have said, how we can support you throughout the year, the door is always open. And also, if you want us to join one of your meetings, which might be an old person invading young people's space, but let us know as well.
Mayor, could I just say real quick? Everything that everyone has said is absolutely accurate. But I also want to say, I really appreciated having the biographies that we had this time just to learn a little bit more about our youth councilors and also say thank you to Abby for hitting the ground running with this group and jumping in when Michael left. So thanks to all of you, and I wish I was there to say this in person, but thanks.
You're all welcome to sit through the rest of the council meeting if you'd like to. So it'll be really entertaining, I promise. Item number 11 is local option sales tax, and we're going to continue the discussion, and there may be possible action on what that local option sales tax might look like. So Ryan, I'm going to just turn this back to you to start with. You had information in our packet for us to kind of start with maybe tonight and help us down that road.
Sure. So I think after hearing the conversation at the last meeting, our team took a stab at putting together some compromising language, I guess you could say, rather than splitting certain expenses out at various percentages. We just threw it all in one big 50% pile. And that doesn't sound too eloquent, but hopefully the language in the sample resolution is a little more articulate, but essentially saying that, you know, obviously 50%, the ballot language would read that 50% has to go to tax relief. That's, we all know that's established by law. And the other 50% could be used for capital projects. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically capital projects, equipment, et cetera, and housing initiatives. And we could continue to work and to shorten this language if you think it needs to, if you think it reads too much for a ballot and continue to tweak it. We did have some conversations with Greater IC. McKenzie is here this evening, talked to her and Katie about this, and they're supportive of this proposed language. I don't mean to speak for them, but I think I am safe in saying that they believe they can promote this along with the other communities if they choose to do housing as kind of a regional effort to invest funding into housing on a regional or county level. It doesn't mean that they might all be regional projects. Certainly, cities can have their own individual projects. And I believe, as I understand and reading some of what Iowa City is talking about, they're even going to get down into some more incremental levels, more specific levels, perhaps even on their ballot. But I think really what we're looking for tonight is direction from this group. If you like this language, if you don't like it, if you want to see something different, if you think it should be shorter, I guess any comments that you might have on this or questions we'd like to iron out and then try to bring back a resolution to move forward with the official ballot language in later July or early August.
Thank you, sir. There were a number of items that we discussed at the last meeting. And if we want to go back to any of those things, I think an important element of this was the funding that is allocated to the city we use here in the city. None of the dollars that we receive are going towards any type of a collaboration with other communities, aside from maybe the possibility of the thing with Coralville that was a really great idea. But that was an important thing for me to understand, that those dollars weren't necessarily coming in, but had to go someplace that we didn't have any control over. So those dollars all come in the door that would go to North Liberty will be used here in North Liberty. I'll admit, I was a little bit stung that my passionate request for 20% of this go specifically to housing. But after sitting on it for a little bit this weekend, I recognize the importance of the ballot measure passing, and Counselor Smith's point at the last meeting hit that. So I've come around to that idea, that this needs to be written in a way that's supportive and collaborative. I still feel and fear that housing may not be something that future councils address in a really potent way, but it gives them the option to do so or not. And that's, I think, what was a big part of your point in the last meeting. So as this is written now, it is a little wordy. I challenge us to maybe make it shorter. I don't know how that's possible, but I'm as very supportive of this topic and language as it's been written right now. So with that, are there things from the last conversation that we want to clear up, first of all, and then I don't know if we'll spend much time on that, and then we can get to addressing what's in front of us? Is there anything from the previous meeting that we didn't get through? Paul, you did a nice summary in your report. Is there anything that you want any clarification on or want to talk more about since what you reported in your report?
No, really, just for me, the 20, you know, voicing it, I would support 20%, you know, towards that. I also agree with keeping it broad and maybe, you know, having that discussion down the road, you know? So yes, I would support that, but do I think it has to be, you know, written in stone on the ballot language? No. I think 50% for us to decide what to do is a good path forward.
And I'm going to, Eric, I feel like I'm forgetting about you. You're only on one screen, so I'm going to specifically ask if you have any updates or comments or thoughts. I know that you've been actively soliciting ideas and opinions on this language.
Yeah, and I have gotten a little bit of feedback from people, not a ton, more questions about what this would actually mean for the community, what this actually does rather than the ballot language itself or what it would go for. So I will continue to do that. I am, I mean, I think we know that housing is an issue for North Liberty. Whether people are voicing those things or not, affordable housing just doesn't exist in North Liberty outside of Gulfview and the other manufactured home park and some apartment-style condominiums. So I am very much in support of allocating something for affordable housing or housing in general, only for housing in general, because I think if we don't do that, we're not doing something for housing now, or we're not doing a lot for housing. We've used SMARPA funds for that. But if we don't allocate something specifically for housing, I don't think it's going to happen. And I think it's something that's important for us to recognize going forward, that as we have more employers coming to town, people who work for those employers need somewhere to live. And we need to make sure that we are able to accommodate people who are not making or are not able to afford a $300,000 house. So I think that's kind of where I'm at. And I mean, if it's not 20%, it's not 20%, but I think there should be something there.
Thank you. Because you're all here in front of me, I won't call on you individually. Anything from the last conversation to clear up? Okay. How do you feel about the language as it's written right now or your thoughts on this in front of us tonight?
So I think that it's broad enough that everybody can pick something they can get behind, which I think is helpful. And the idea of doing this is we want it to pass. And to Brent's point, that maybe getting a little too specific things may actually be problematic and stuff. I think that there's probably a few words we could take out of here, but otherwise, I think I'm making sure we at least include the housing part of it as, you know, something that people would be able to kind of help get people behind it and stuff. And then it's up to the council then to kind of identify things that we can do with some of that.
Mayor, I like the language. It was innovative staff. You've done a wonderful job here of taking our conversation, working through it, and giving the flexibility. Mayor, while I agree, it looks wordy on paper, I agree with Brian that, you know, there's a lot of things in here that folks could pick to get behind. Eric, while I don't disagree with your argument, my position from last time to this time remains. It's not necessarily what we might think as a council makeup of exactly what we need, but what the voters will approve. And I think those two things are quite different with the makeup of our town. I think that this gives us the ability, gives the flexibility of future councils, if they have priorities of housing, to be able to do that. And, you know, while I understand what you're saying, Eric, and don't disagree, if it's not clearly defined, I think that the passing of the measure is more important than, you know, sticking to a percentage or maybe hamstringing the council to a percentage. So I like the wording, and I'm in favor of it.
I would just, there's, I think it gets, I think all those things are exciting. The one that I could potentially see us removing, because I just don't know that everyone would know what it is, would be workforce housing gap support. I think, you know, a normal person reading it, you know, is just going to kind of, I don't know, I just think gloss over that, you know, line. So if there was something we could remove, there's a lot of stuff in here that's exciting, rental rehabilitation, you know, home improvement, renovation grants, that's all exciting stuff for the city to, you know. I just think that particular piece of it, we could potentially remove.
From my seat, thanks, everyone, for their comments and feedback, and thank you, staff, for incorporating the, from what we put forth a couple of weeks ago in regards to what we'd like to see. I am supportive of the present plan. However, I do have one question. I do believe that it is broad enough, but I wonder, does it limit our flexibility to just two primary buckets, and that being capital improvement projects and housing? And I wonder if there's not something that we could explore from a, Eric, you mentioned it yourself, you know, with employers coming to town, is there something that we can add or should we even add? It's a question mark or discussion about employer reinvestment or business support, business reinvestment that broadens the buckets to three priorities. One, capital improvement projects. Two, housing. And three, business reinvestment, something along those lines, where we would not be limited to just, these are the two, and if it's not in that bucket. Then it does, no matter if it's a year from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, give the council the discretion to say, hey, you know what? We can use our lost dollars in one of these three areas. Just something to consider, because I do believe that it is important with a growing community to have that intentionality with, hey, I'm not looking at today, but I'm looking for 20 years down the road. What is it going to mean if we can't get employers here? We might not have some of the sustainability that we've come to experience.
Are there any thoughts on that idea?
So basically adding like, comma, economic development.
Economic development, business reinvestment, something along those lines.
So you can add that in there. The other flip side of that is if you had some of this, you know, funding, you could use other funding for that.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I'm just looking back to Brent's earlier point on how does it get passed when we address all of our constituents and try and invite additional employers in, say, hey, we've got a commitment to you, and here's how we're doing it. Here's a demonstration of that commitment.
Yeah, I see your point. I fear that it runs in the same lane as spelling out housing specifically, that it may confuse or turn off or just get someone not to participate in the ballot or in the measure to be supportive of it. That's my only hesitation. Ryan has a question or comment.
Just a quick comment on that, and I think one could argue that housing is assisting businesses, not argue, but debate that. I think McKenzie might, may or may not agree. I won't look to see if she's nodding. But I've talked into employers in town here who've said their biggest challenge is getting employees to live in town. A lot of them are coming from other ways, so this would certainly help that. And I think the other thing, and you've heard me say, economic development, quality of life is economic development, well, these capital projects, most of them represent a quality of life investment into the community.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. Just something for consideration.
Good discussion.
Brent, you have any thoughts?
Economic development's been the drum that I've beat for a long time. I certainly think it makes sense. I understand where you're coming from, and I, you know, to me, the broader the language here, the better. The only question, and maybe this is for McKenzie, I don't know, is there a litmus test for ballot language like this? Is there, are there, outside of Grant, and we appreciate Grant and what he does, no doubt, but is there a third party removed that can read this language and understand what we're trying to put in and say, this is going to work, but here's a hurdle that you're not seeing? Or if you word it this way, you might gain this but lose this? You know, it's the legal wording that I question. Like, are we hitting what we want to? And are we anticipating challenges in the wording? I don't know.
Yeah, I think a lot of that's going to come down to the marketing of this and assuming Greater IC and their committee helps market and promote this. From a legal standpoint, I mean, I think it's pretty clear. We have this, and if we add something else, of course, we have a lot of options here. But I think it's hard to project, will it pass without doing probably some significant testing. I want to just, I'll remind, I maybe told you this story before, and I don't mean to digress too much here, but with our first local option sales tax, I think it was 2009, if I'm not mistaken, just before that, we did a pretty comprehensive, statistically accurate study. And 97, 96% of the respondents said we should invest in 965, that's what it was called at the time. And that was the number one issue on the ballot, and it failed 63 to 34, whatever. So I would have thought it was going to be an easy win based on that survey. So I just think it's hard to predict what's going to happen at the polls.
You know, I look, to Brian's point, I look right now at what we have to offer on packages, on funding, on grants, on, you know, workforce, economic development, why we have partnerships. We don't really have anything that we offer companies that are coming here. Yes, we can do packages. Yes, we can do packages. Yes, we can do tax abatement things. Yes, we can do TIF districts, but, you know, true economic development packages, we haven't been, and the argument has been made, we haven't been big enough to be able to do that and we haven't had the budgetary means to be able to do things like that. Would this assist us in that? Possibly. It, it could. The other question here is, and I don't know if this needs to be part of the vote, is what's our sunset if we do have one? Because I don't know that we've talked much about that.
And I, I'd just like to offer another side on the economic development standpoint. You know, we have the same tools as most of, of all the communities in Iowa, and I would argue we've been pretty aggressive here as of late. But again, when we, when we have some of these bigger companies come in, and I'll use the, the one, you might remember, there was a medical labs company a few years ago. And ultimately, we, it was between us and town and city in Kansas, and they went to Kansas, and one of the issues, you know, is workforce and housing. That wasn't the main issue, but that was one of them that was noted. And so I, I think we have to remember that this fund isn't going to be everything to everybody. And it might make more sense to focus on a couple of the core areas that we know that we've heard need help and put it there.
And I'll reiterate what Ryan said a moment ago about community development is economic development as well. Investing in trails and parks, a good fire station, those are, those are things that invite folks to the community just as much. Along with that then, if we have support for those or a few of those efforts, it may free up budget money for us to do additional things. And that's kind of the idea.
Yeah.
As well.
Mayor, I think, but I think with that, if you, if you look at fire station, fire trucks, community center, parks and trails, if, if just for those things, in five years, we've accomplished those things. And now our list is limited because we're not going to build five fire stations in this town. We're not going to, we're not going to have that large of a department, right? So within a five-year period, a lot of that gets done. Now, fire trucks continue to roll over and are a continuing need for spending. But our list, I think, if we're going to say a 10, a 20-year or a no sunset, I think we are limiting ourselves quite a bit with this language. If we're only doing a five to 10-year, I think this makes more sense. If we're saying 20-year or more, I might tend to think that we need to have longer-term goals on here that aren't going to be accomplished in just five years and be limited to what's left.
Keep in mind that, you know, that CIP is updated every year. We've had a CIP now for 18 years and that five-year average has always been 40 or 50 million. I mean, projects are, now some of those are water, wastewater, which are from other areas.
Yeah. We're never going to run out of capital projects. And this is, the language is broad enough to include things other than what's specifically listed. I would say probably remove before fire station because then seems like we're just saying we're going to use it for one fire station. I am a little concerned, maybe more, more than a little concerned about someone coming into the booth, the voting booth and looking at this language and thinking, what in the world is this? I mean, I think it's, it is a little cumbersome. I think that possibly having 50% for property tax relief at the beginning is going to help a lot. Because I don't think we have probably done anything for property tax relief in the past. And we were required to say 0% for property tax relief, even though whatever we do is going to be helping us with our property taxes in some way. People just don't understand that. I am still in favor of having, say, 5% for housing and then the rest 45% for all of these other things, including housing. So we have the flexibility to, to use more money for housing if we want to, but also know that we have something there. I mean, clearly, companies are asking for us to do something about housing. So I think we should have that in there.
But Eric, I think you're limiting yourself. If, if your, if your priority is housing and it's 5%, you know, the, the makeup of, of a council might deem that more than 5% needs distributed for a, a housing project that's, you know, that's spun up with a partner. You know, I, you may find that if, if you're limiting, if you put that 5% in there, you're, I think you're limiting yourself. With the current language, you're not. It could be as much as 50%. So I want to be careful there.
No, I, I'm saying leave, leave the other language, the 45% for all of these things that are listed here, including housing, but allocate 5% just for housing.
You're talking about establishing a floor, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least 5%.
I see.
So when we come back, you know, future councils or, you know, down the road, assuming that this would pass, how often do we get to, you know, change what's being applied to what?
Yeah, that, that'll, that's a question we still have to answer because this group could choose to not put a sunset on it. And if it passes, then it's, it is that way forever. Or you could put a sunset on it. Pick your, pick your number.
Yeah, we haven't, basically haven't gotten there yet. So we need to get language and then term.
And I would put a plug in for not having any sunset. I think we should have this run and if we need to change things in the future, we can, we can go through this process again, but I, I would, I would not put an expiration date on it.
I, I tend to agree with, with Eric there and it's just be getting the language correct. Because otherwise you're having that conver, this conversation again in 10, 10 years. I, again, I would, I appreciated your point, Brent, earlier on, you know, limiting it. And Eric, you make a good point as well. We're not going to run out of capital city or capital improvement projects at all. We're just not, that's, I don't see that. I think there is value in additional flexibility from economic development, economic reinvestment, but I'm only one voice. So that's, that's my opinion. I would say in this space, I would add for one more version with perhaps a few reductions just from a verbiage standpoint and, and some kind of economic development inclusion. I think that gives us more flexibility with no sunset, but that's why we have five and not just Brian.
Can I ask a question? Is transportation something that, that we could be doing with loss?
From a legal perspective, there's no issue. I mean, that could be on the ballot. It would be a matter of policy for this group to discuss.
At some point, the including but not limited to comes into play. Or is that, is that limited by capital improvements and housing?
It is.
For instance, capital improvement.
That was the intent.
Transportation?
Yeah.
If we chose at some point.
I'm sorry.
Could transportation, for instance, like Eric, Eric mentioned, be part of the capital improvement?
I, maybe if it's a purchase of something, but not for operations.
Got it.
So we still have a couple of trains of, go ahead, Eric, sorry.
Oh, no, I just was going to say, I don't want to overcomplicate things. I mean, I feel like, I don't want to just keep throwing things at it. So I am okay with capital projects and housing. I just would like to see something specifically designated for housing.
So what I was going to say, it sounds like we've got two, three language things to consider. The way it's been written, which was an attempt to capture our comments from the last meeting, possibly including some language about economic development and also something about housing. Because I don't get to vote on this.
Establishing a floor, I think would be the best way to summarize it.
Establishing a floor. I can just say, I, I think the language as it's written right now is probably the best comprehensive option that we have. If we add anything more to it, I, I think to Brent's point in our last meeting, it just draws some attention in places that seems like it might be helpful, but it might actually confuse it even more for folks. My preference would just be to leave the language as it is in there. It gives us, it gives future councils a lot of flexibility. And Eric, I, I was right there with you. I wanted housing to be spelled out specifically in there. And I will challenge future councils, when they set down for their two-year planning sessions, to be thoughtful about that. Two of you will be here for sure next year. Three of us will be on the ballot yet. So, I'm sorry, three of you will be here. Two of you will be on the ballot. So that's, that's something for future councils, but I think that's okay with me if this can be something that this community finally supports.
I, I think there, we could probably get a few words out of here though, still.
How do you feel about the language itself? Would you include anything else in there, Ryan?
So I think I would probably leave it pretty close to that, but I probably would, you know, limited to, you know, fire station and community center upgrades, fire trucks, streets, and then leave off the project, other projects identified in the capital improvement plan because you, you don't need that, the words there because that was, you know, already there.
I think that's probably most important to leave that in.
Yeah, I would say that gives us the greatest flexibility.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a deep pool of funding.
Well, then leave it something or other projects in somewhere. And then, and then programs initiatives that increase the housing supply and access. Maybe we can shrink that down a little bit to, you know, act programs and initiatives that increase, you know, housing, you know, for North Liberty residents, you know, and, and maybe they don't need to put all of the different types in there. Because we can kind of interpret it mostly as we want later on, as long as it has to do with something, but just needed to get it, just enough, oh, strict enough to, that we don't inadvertently cut something off that we wanted to fund. Because I've had other people have done that when they did these things and accidentally did that, so. But, you know, less words is always easier to look at.
Less words, but the, the intent of the, the language that's written is you're supportive of. Okay. I'm just going to go down the line. Brent, how do you feel?
I'm not in favor of putting a floor in for housing. I am in favor of the language as is. I would be open to inclusion of economic development with some reword. I would be in favor of no sunset. And again, caution timing because Greater Iowa City is doing us all trying to herd cats and they need as much time as possible. And so the more things we throw at the board to stick, the less time they have to help make this successful. So the, the sooner this can get moving, the better. I, I think we're close enough that, that we could figure it out tonight, to be honest with you, so that we're not waiting another two weeks or a month, but that's just me.
Well, we would want to bring back an official resolution.
Yeah.
And we're, we would then, and I don't, again, if you have something to say, McKinsey certainly jump up, but we're, I think at this point, if we're close, we're at the same or even ahead of Iowa City. And I suspect they'll want to get everyone at a certain point before they make a big push, but maybe I'm wrong on that.
I don't know that we're ahead of Iowa City. I'd say we're ahead of Corahville.
Iowa City won't have language until August is what I was.
Yeah, that's correct. So I would say from our perspective, we appreciate the thoughtful conversation and you wanting to get it right. But to Counselor Smith's point, the more time we have to effectively campaign, the better. We are doing as much preparatory work as we can and thinking about that this is likely to be on the ballot this fall. But if, if it is possible to continue and have something, you know, for July and move that forward, that would line up at least with Iowa City's timing likely as well. And we'll continue to work with Corahville.
Eric, since you're next down the line, but on the screen, any last thoughts on this? I know, yeah.
I, I don't really have anything to add. I, I do want to say thank you to, to staff for, for being thoughtful about our discussion last time and trying to encapsulate that into, to this language, to, to the language that's here. I think, I'm not, I'm glad I'm not the one who has to write it. And I, I think you did a, a pretty good job of encapsulating it. I think it's, seeing it on paper after discussing it last week or the last meeting is a little more overwhelming than I had hoped it would be. So if we can simplify it in any way, I think we should, but I've made the best case I can right now for, for a floor for housing and I will continue to ask for that.
Thank you. Paul?
I would, like I said, eliminate the, because I believe it's covered under including but not limited to, so I would eliminate the workforce housing gap support line. I think that's something that could be taken away. My, my interest is making sure it's sellable. I think the neighborhood reinvestment projects, I love all that wordage. I think that's exciting for people to, you know, think about a, anything that's, you know, potentially rundown, being able to, you know, be improved. That's, that's all sellable. I would, I don't know, this is just my thought, but I, I call the community center the rec center. So I want to make sure that, you know, people that are reading this, you know, don't see community center and just kind of glaze over. I don't know if someone says, I'm going, hey, you want to go to the community center and play hoops? So that's my own personal thing. I think that potentially could just be rec center. And then I am also in favor of no sunset. So I would, I would mention that. And I think that's all I came up with.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah. First and foremost, thank you to staff for incorporating feedback and listening. It is helpful to see this and as Brent mentioned, I think we're very close. I will offer one alternative, just from a wordsmithing standpoint, and, and we don't need to get into every, every detail on the wordsmith, but, you know, it says other projects identified in the city's capital improvements plan. One of the things that I mentioned before starting on the city council was the focus on our overall comprehensive plan. And I wonder if there's not some kind of verbiage that we can include in that that incorporates not only the economic development requests that I'd asked for, but also if there are projects related to transportation, as, as Eric mentioned, or civil, social services, different things like that, that we would have a flexibility, as long as it's identified in our comprehensive plan, might give us some of that broad, general language that we've kind of at least been discussing at length tonight. So I'm, I'm in favor of the language as it is. I'd like to maybe see just a few edits and adjustments, tightening things up from a wordsmith standpoint. Eric, I, from the floor standpoint, I think at least on the surface right now, without, you know, sleeping on it a little bit more, I think establishing a floor from my seat projects out to have more negative consequences than it does positive. And so that's why I would leave the, the language vague as it is right now from a 50% because then the council will have the, the discretion on how much to put in. I do see Brent's point on if we established a floor at 5%, somebody's, the council could potentially just say, you know what? It's 5% and that's it. And I don't think that goes to the intent of what you're trying to get. So that's why I'm against a floor. But otherwise, I, I think we're, we're real close. So I would say tighten up the language a little bit. If there is anything that we can do to expand it, I would include economic development and potentially consider the comprehensive plan as a project to, to align with.
If I may.
Yeah, please do.
I didn't, I haven't had any input in this. I believe the language was, was provided by Greater Iowa City. I just wanted to touch on one thing.
I'm not sure who.
I mean, staff accepts all the praise you want to give us.
Well, McKinsey, thank you.
But I, I will have to look into the question about the comprehensive plan. That's, that's a separate co action. Zoning is a police power type. separate code action. Zoning is a police power type of thing, and so, we put some aspirational stuff in there.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll try to work with the GIC folks and see what's feasible, what's even feasible there. That, that may not be workable, but, but I understand the, the concept.
The intent, yeah.
Outside of zoning and what you can do where, there are, there are other things that are included in our comprehensive plan as, as ideals that we shoot for, and I think I'll, I'll look into, see what we can do that, that will satisfy the requirements of the law. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Would it be fair to say, though, that the comprehensive plan, while it's the, the vision or it's the, it's the ideas, it's really the CIP that is the, the tool by which we get to our comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's a, a fair way to say it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, what I heard, taking notes, is that we have consensus to run with this language as it is in here. There wasn't enough support for a housing language to be added specifically. Everybody wanted to reduce this a little bit, and however, you all can pull that off. I think Paul had a, a list of items probably more comprehensive than, than anybody else. So, go back on that. And for the moment, not adding anything specifically for economic development, because it can be captured in this language. Does that represent what we've had up here so far in the conversation? Okay.
And no sunset.
Well, let's talk about that. Everybody feels okay on the sunset. This is something I honestly feel differently about, and I, but I want to, I don't have a vote in this.
I'd be interested in your opinion.
Tell me why the.
Yeah, I'd be interested in your opinion.
I, I wonder if it feels to voters as if this is going to be a forever thing, and that might make it feel like it's more of a burden that they don't want to be a part of, or they want, want to support, whereas a time limit may provide an opportunity for the city to come back to the voters at that point in time and say, look, this is what we did with the local option sales tax, and not likely to have this type of an arduous conversation about it again. But basically, it's just a renewal, and it may go a little bit simpler, because there are going to be proven examples of what we, as a city, were able to use those dollars for. I recognize, though, that I'm in the minority on this. I'm interested in, in the, the thoughts on why you would not sunset this.
I've thought about similar, Mayor, and I, I share the concern. I, again, we won't know how it plays in the booth until the end of the vote. That is a concern. Again, back to the marketing, it's, and I, I guess, how is it, how is it worded in the ballot language? The sunset clause. If it's 5, 10, 20, or unlimited, how does it read?
You would be able to make that decision. I believe if you don't have a sunset, then it's just left out entirely. You would have the start date for implementation, but they wouldn't say anything about a, a closing date. So, it's not that you would be calling attention on the ballot language to the fact that there's no sunset. It would only be if you had one, you would then have an end date for the tax.
So, that, that, that helps with my decision there, and I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave it at that.
Would you care to express what your decision is on that, then?
No sunset.
No sunset. Just don't even recognize language in the ballot at all about a sunset?
Nope.
Okay.
It's, again, it's good for 93% of Iowa and not us, and we've been the last of the table. It's our turn, and I, I think most voters are going to agree with that, and I'm sure that's going to be a basis of, of the marketing and the educational piece from Mackenzie and her, her team.
A question for, for Grant, and, and maybe it's Mackenzie. You know, should, should winds change, and we hear from all our constituents and say, hey, you know what, we're tired of paying this local option sales tax. Do we just bring that to the council and say, okay, we need to get it on the ballot to get it removed, or how does, yeah, okay. So, that, that option does exist if we, if we hear from folks that we need, we need to have this finished.
Typically, yeah. If you need an election to get it on, you need an election to take it off. That's typically how it works. But I would defer to Mackenzie on any specifics. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mackenzie Solins, Tiffens, do they have sunsets, yes or no? Do you remember? I'm sorry to call you off the spot. I'm sorry.
Don't quote me. I believe Solins does not. I'm less sure about Tiffens, but.
I'm pretty sure Tiffen doesn't.
Does not as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say the trend has been to have no sunset, and even municipalities that did have one, when it came up for renewal, when they put it on the ballot again, they took off the sunset. So, largely, they're now in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important to reiterate, you know, we're getting ahead of potential, you know, losing revenue as a city due to changes from property tax laws that are coming. And so, you know, this seems like an extra tax, but I guess, I mean, it is, but, you know, in order for us to keep growing, in order for us to keep, you know, having the quality of life and, you know, just growing like we have been, I think it's, I don't know, I just wanted to, that element of it, the, the changes coming in property taxes, to me is, is a huge reason why this is necessary.
That's a good selling point. Good, good marketing for it, yep.
And Paul, when your property tax goes up 5%, you're paying the full 5%. With the 1%, you're not realizing the 1%. You are sharing it with those that come into our community, and you're sharing that cost. Nobody else, I, I'm sorry, Paul, but I'm not going to offer to share to pay 5% of your property taxes, right? Nobody's really helping with that, but this, there is that assistance. It's different.
But no sunset?
No sunset.
Yeah, I think that's probably the better way to go.
Okay. You need anything else from this council tonight?
Nope. Clear, Matt.
Okay.
I'm good to go.
Okay. Thank you. Mackenzie, thank you. We have one youth council that stuck around. Thank you for sticking around. I told you this would be interesting, didn't I? Yes. I'll move on to item 12, which is our board and commission appointments, and item A is our council's confirmation of the mayor's appointments on the respective boards and commissions. I'll have a motion for consideration, please.
Someone.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wason. Is there any discussion?
Thank you to everybody who applied for these important positions.
Agreed. And I will offer my apologies to council for not having this in the packet by Friday. It has been a busy month since I first got this list, so I appreciate your indulgence in letting me. One of the things that I do in this way is that I call these folks, and even to affirm that they are going to be coming back, or especially if they're new to these posts. So, those conversations do take just a little bit of time, so I appreciate your, your, your leeway on that. Do we need roll call, or is a voice vote sufficient, Tracy?
Voice.
Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Awesome, thank you. Item 13, then, is our collective bargaining agreements, and item A, resolution number 2025-74, is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of North Liberty and North Liberty Sergeants Association for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2030. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Some moved. Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wason. You guys have any questions about this? There's a lot of language in there, but we had a good summary on this a couple of weeks ago. Did you want to say anything?
I can, if you'd like. And I would just note on, on both of these, we had some good negotiations, starting back in early, early February, I think. Chief is here tonight. She was part of those negotiations. The biggest change, as I've noted in the packet, is that it's been, you know, going on five years since we last negotiated with the officers. You could tell that in the wage brackets when you compared it to, to other municipalities, and law enforcement is one of the most competitive, competitive markets out there right now, because there just aren't as many folks getting into it. And so, what you're seeing in these, both agreements, is what we believe is to bring our officers up to more competitive wages locally to better retain and recruit.
And Ryan, can you remind us, one of these wasn't actually due for conversation yet this year?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. We opened up the agreement with the officers, which is the second one on your agenda here, but we, I think we both agreed, both being, both parties agreed to open it up, because obviously, they were concerned about wages, but so were we. We were equally concerned, because, again, we want to retain and recruit folks. So, we agreed to open that up. Now, both agreements are synced, and so, every, ideally, we'll continue, you know, this is a five-year agreement, and five years we'll negotiate both of them, and hopefully have similar term agreements with, with each agency, or with each, each group.
Thank you for, for noting that.
Mayor, I appreciate it, because anytime a collective bargaining agreement sees a, you know, 10, 15%, this one, a 14% act raise over the term, you see wage compression with everyone else. It was proactively engaged, one, in agreeing on both parties to, to open up for additional negotiations on their side, but also the work that our new human resources director is doing on your direction with, with a wage study. So, all of that timing is important, because that wage compression can be problematic, and you guys were proactive with that. I appreciate that.
Any other thoughts or questions?
All right. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item B, then, is resolution number 2025-75, and this is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of North Liberty and public professional and maintenance employees, Local 2003, for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2030. Could I have a motion for consideration as well, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Leibold. Any additional questions? Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 14 is FY 2025-2026 wages, and item A, resolution number 2025-76, is a resolution authorizing salaries and hourly wages for city employees for the fiscal year of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Smith. Before I turn it over to Ryan, are there any questions? And Alexis, excuse me.
Mayor, just a comment. So, now that this is on the agenda, I can talk about this, I guess, publicly. I made an ask a while ago, when we were looking at surplus, to dig a little deeper and assure that staff was realizing more than a 3% raise. Ryan took that suggestion. We had good conversation, and you see that with the wage study as part of that, not just one counselor asking that, that staff get additional, but to back it up with the research, you're seeing a, a 4% COLA there. So, I appreciate that, Ryan. Certainly want to see staff be able to survive the higher prices we're all seeing. So, thank you.
Ryan, I'm going to turn this over to you and Alexis.
Sure.
Some type of coordinated effort here.
Yeah, I'll take the lead on this, and, and as, as you noted, Alexis Miller is, is in the audience tonight. Alexis has now been with us since December, I believe, right? December. And, in my opinion, did a remarkable job on this compensation analysis and study. Looked at a number of different variables here, including the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, other comparable municipalities, and I think, you know, what we saw is, in some cases, our, our wage ranges needed to be adjusted and/or job descriptions needed to be, needed to move up in a range. And frankly, we still have some more work to do, as was noted in here. I would, I would note that, as, as one example, in the wastewater department, there are a handful, more than a handful of, of job titles in here, including labor or wastewater 1, wastewater 2, wastewater 3. And I think we have an opportunity here, and I know Alexis is excited about this, to reevaluate some of these positions and determine, is it, they're not being used, will they be used in the future, and just really look at that and maybe streamline that a little bit. I bring that up only as a point of reference. It's not really anything we need to talk further about tonight, but just so you know, we continue to look at this stuff. I would, generally, when we've had this resolution on the agenda in the past, you've all know it's coming. It's a requirement of the code that we, of the law that we have this resolution. This year, it's a little bit different, because we did talk about 3% increases or COLAs in the budget, given the study, given the fact that, you know, we, we tried to make some significant adjustments to law enforcement. We felt it necessary to, to take a hard look at where the rest of the group was, and so, that's why you're seeing what you're seeing this evening. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware, it will have about a 60, I guess it's $66,000 impact to the general fund, budgeted versus what I'm proposing, and then about $16,000 spread across the utility funds and road use tax funds. I think we can absorb that. I think it is to, to reward our, our employees and continue to retain and recruit good people. I think this is a necessary step. You might also have picked up in the memo that we're going to look at the wage matrix in the compensation program every five years. I can tell you that was our intent when we did it in 2018, and time gets away from us. I'm sure Alexis won't let that happen, and so, we'll, we'll continue to look at this and make sure we're keeping up with, with our peers. So, I think I'll stop there and, and open it up for any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I do have two other things to mention. Just as a reminder, tonight, you're voting on, on the resolution. The study was in there for more of a reference. I would also note, and you probably saw this, the study does outline recommended salary changes for mayor and council. We're going to be talking about that. That's, that isn't, there's no activity on that this evening. Those wages are not included in the resolution. Mayor and city council salaries are required to be approved via an ordinance, and then actually don't go into effect until after the next election. So, we'll probably have something in front of you late July, early August for discussion, and then, assuming it moves through the reading process, nothing changes until January 1. I just want to make that clear, that while it was in the study, it's not part of the resolution.
Yeah, thanks for making that distinction. I think we probably all had that question a little bit, on how much we would get into that tonight. Alexis, I just want to say thank you. This was an impressive amount of research that you did and, and time and effort. I, my first question to Ryan was, how much of this did Deb start, and you came in and finished, and he said you did this entirely on your own. So, the amount of time that you've been here, and how in-depth this was, is, is impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this while Alexis is here tonight?
Alexis, so, only question I had, sometimes with these wage studies, you see kind of a limit placed on staff or an elongation of steps. So, if I start as an entry level at step one, and I have 18 steps to realize maximizing out, that can be detrimental to the employee, in my opinion. What did you find in your research? Was there any limiting of steps? Was there condensing of steps to allow people to realize the full potential in each position?
Yeah, so with some of the rate, wage ranges that we had, and the recommendations to bump certain positions to that next wage range, allowed those individuals to have progressive steps where they were maxed out in range, and they had no further growth, no further development within the city. So, those recommended changes made the ability for those staff members to continue, get those increases year over year, and have the ability to progress. Ryan also mentioned the intent to review the wastewater 1, wastewater 2, wastewater 3. Some of those positions right now, our, our staff are more so in level 2 or level 3, where we're not really seeing many staff members be in level 1 in that entry level position. There's not a lot of turnover in those roles, so reallocating and reevaluating the job descriptions for those roles to better align with where our staff are within the city currently, as we, we grow and we progress as well.
I think backing on, on that is, let's just say there's an employee that's doing an exceptional job. You know, we have baked in raises, you know, cost of living increases. What if they're just doing a great What if they're just doing a great job? Can, you know, can we just pay them more based on just the fact that they're great?
Yeah, so during the annual performance review process, the department heads have the ability to recommend more than a one-step increase for that annual base increase effective July 1. So there are several department heads that made those recommendations in, prior to the wage study being conducted. And I think it's a great way to highlight well and top performers.
And on the other hand, if they, if an employee doesn't score well, they may not get a step. So the reverse is true as well.
And that was based on the Austin Peters Compensation Performance Evaluation metric that they did in 2008 as well.
From my seat, very much appreciate the methodology and the explanation of it because I read it all. And so my question is just a more point of order, is it the wages and salaries that we're approving only, or is it the pay bands as well?
Tonight, it's just the wages. The wages, we'll move forward with updating the pay schedules, which are reflective here.
Yeah, I just saw a recommendation in all of the buckets, and so it's just the wages and salaries for tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to learn more about the bands.
Thank you.
And the cities that we compared North Liberty to, how did you decide on those cities?
Yeah, so the study that was done in 2018, or 2018 by Deb, I mirrored the same study, or the same cities that were, used as a reference point in 2018. I compiled that with the Bureau of Labor Statistics, with the regional data from Lynn County and Johnson County as well, to have a more comprehensive look at our immediate neighboring market data. So Cedar Rapids, Marion, Iowa City, Corleville, and compounded that to get a more broad stroke on what the compression and what the average compensation market is saying for those respective positions.
The ones that aren't like our neighbors?
Same size, so size, population.
Growth. Yeah, so when we looked at those in 18, some of those cities were actually included in the original 2007 study. And then we also then, I mean, obviously, things change over time, so we just really looked at comparable cities in metro areas that are growing, and then tried to focus, obviously, locally as well, because those are going to be some of the main competitors.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you.
Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 15 is Mental Health Liaison Agreement, and Item A is Resolution Number 2025-77. This is a resolution approving the reimbursement agreement for law enforcement liaison between the North Liberty Police Department, the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, and the Corleville Police Department. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Leibold, seconded by Park. Are there any questions about this? Found ourselves in a unique situation, we need to do something about it.
We did, Mayor, and this is a really important aspect of, I know law enforcement is using them more and more. Ryan, what's the realization over the three shared cost increase? Not that that keeps us from agreeing to this with the importance of it, but...
The realization of what?
Of the increase. Since the state funding and federal funding are done, there's raises in the three entities, yes?
Yes.
So what's the shared?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Difference?
And the chief is here as well, if you have any logistical questions for her while I look that up real quick, on how the program is working.
What's my understanding, Chief? This has been pretty useful program, and you have pretty ready access, and we have space to support this person here if they need, you know?
This is a very beneficial program. So I was just looking at numbers. So for last year, between the three entities, we utilized Kiana Pope. She responded to 142 calls between Corleville, North Liberty, and Johnson County. Thirty-five of those calls were for North Liberty, and the number kind of seems small, but really what it is, is the hours that she spends on those calls. This year, in 2025, she has nine calls out of her, and I believe it's 85 calls so far over, overall. But those are nine calls that she's responding to on scene for those calls at one property. And so it's hours and hours and hours dealing with mental health crises and issues that are going on at one property. So while she's doing that, law enforcement officers can go out and do other activities. So it's just a huge benefit. The thing that we're not able to capture is the follow-up that she does with all of these families and residents of our town. We just haven't been able to capitalize on that yet, but I anticipate that'll happen.
And the referrals that she's doing with partnering agencies to get those folks wrap around, help you?
Absolutely. So it's with GuideLink, it's with, it's with mental health services, it's with doctor, I mean, she's just even calling doctors and getting prescriptions and medications and things that, she just has that support that she has and those connections that she's able to utilize.
Yeah.
And again, we're not really directly involved in all that after, but I know she's doing it, and we see it's being done.
Brent, to your question, I'm sorry, just to answer your question, right at 40, just under $45,000 will be our share.
I was just going to mention, I would love to have her come in and present sometime and just hear some of those, you know, situations, if that's possible, but, because I think that's a great, a great thing.
We can always ask and see what she can share publicly with what she's, what she's doing.
Good point.
And then I anticipate, as this program, right, so when we started this program, we could not sustain that position ourselves, so that's why we're sharing it. So I anticipate next year that we'll continue to see increase with benefits and cost of living, and so that's why it's just a one-year contract that we're looking at this. We do want to continue to use this program as long as we can.
Does she have space in your facility that she's?
She has an office space that she can utilize in our facility, and then, of course, that she's also, she's housed now with the sheriff's office and utilizes their vehicle and their equipment, but she has space in our facility.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 16 is the Preserve Part 3B. Item A is Resolution Number 2025-78, and this is a resolution approving the final plat for the Preserve Part 3B, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibold. Does anyone have any questions about this? Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 17 is the Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, and Item A is Resolution Number 2025-79, a resolution authorizing the approval and participation in a joint powers agreement and declaration of trust for the Iowa Public Investment Trust, authorizing investments through the fixed term automated investment program of IPATE, and authorizing IPATE to designate and name depositories. Could I have a motion for consideration first here?
I'll move this, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Wasen. Do you guys have any questions, probably for Ryan, in general? Ryan, can you just summarize what we're doing here and why?
Sure. Yeah, I think the easiest way to boil this down is, basically, we have an influx of money coming in with our bond, bond closing next week on the 30th. IPATE allows us to take, to move, to move money in and out every day. It's very liquid, and I don't know if you, I know stuff, including your packet, was pretty lengthy, but basically, we can, without having to buy a CD for six months, we can get similar rates and be protected with our money, as I tried to outline in an email this morning, by using this service. And we still have ample money in all of our North Liberty banks, and in fact, when we close on the 30th, we'll be in violation, if we don't move it somewhere else, we'll be in violation of our depository resolution, because we'll be higher than the numbers that we've agreed to put in there. This is a great option, and frankly, will allow us the most growth on our funds while still having liquidity. And that's important, especially with this project. The $20 million of this is the economic development project, and so as we need funds throughout the next year, through with closings, with construction costs, et cetera, we can get these out relatively quickly, all while we're still earning a decent return on these funds. It's new for us, but it's been around, as you can see, for a very long time.
Any follow-up questions for?
Can you just go over the protection of the money?
Yes, so when we, when we have money in a bank, the first $250,000 is FDIC insured. Everything else on that, the bank has to provide collateral. They have to, I'm not even sure what board it is, they have to go in front of someone. Do you, can you?
Remember the name off the top of my head. They have to certify regularly.
They have the collateral to back that up if something should happen. Everything that these folks invest in, have to, they have to have that same collateral. And so it's basically the same rules. So I wouldn't say there's no risk, there's always risk. We have risk wherever we put our money. But this is no more riskier than having it in a local bank.
Anything else?
Nothing, just continued support with the deposits in our local banks, I think, is integral and key. So this is a bridge, if you will, right, and flexibility that we need, but I do want to remain focused on local investments.
And I'll give the asterisk that there's also credit unions where we have money.
Banks and credit unions, yes, thank you.
Okay. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 18 is our janitorial contract, and this is Item A, Resolution Number 2025-80, a resolution approving the janitorial services contract, city hall and library between the City of North Liberty and Riggengood LLC. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Leibold, seconded by Park. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is UCD Holdings LLC rezoning and preliminary plat. This is our third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from C1B General Commercial District and C3 High Intensity Commercial District to CU C3 Urban Central Higher Intensity Commercial District. Could I have a motion for consideration and adoption, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wasen. Are there any last questions on this one? Seeing none, Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item B, Russ's staff and planning commission recommendations regarding UCD preliminary plat.
Yeah, so the planning commission considered the rezoning and the preliminary plat at the May meeting, and so we waited until the rezoning was at the third reading, so now we can consider them both together. This is just a seven-lot subdivision, lays out the lots and the private streets and stormwater detention, pretty straightforward. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and so did staff.
Thank you. Don't imagine there are any questions. I'll move on to item C, which is applicant presentation. Anything more that needs to be said about this? Thank you. Item D then is Resolution Number 2025-81. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plat for urban central district North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Leibold. Any questions about that? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wasen.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Item 20 is Watts Group Development, Inc., rezoning on the east side. This is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from ID interim development district to RS6 Single Unit Residence District, RS9 Single Unit Residence District, RD10 Two-Unit Residence District, RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District, and RM14 Multi-Unit Residence District. Could I have a motion for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Wasen, seconded by Park. Any last questions on this one? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 21 is Watts Group Development, Inc., rezoning on the west side. This is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from ID interim development district to RS6 Single Unit Residence District, RS9 Single Unit Residence District, RD10 Two-Unit Residence District, RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District, and RM14 Multi-Unit Residence District. Could I have a motion for consideration and adoption?
I'll move the west side, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Leibold. Any questions?
No questions, but I think it's just worth a comment here again, and guys, thank you for your patience and working with us to this point. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read all the feedback that's been submitted publicly. I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind, the one that I think is representative of a number of us up here, and probably even all of us. Neighborhoods designed with intention, with green spaces, walking trails, communal areas that add value beyond just the homes themselves, right? Again, just a reminder, this is the front door of North Liberty. Let's make sure it looks good. Thank you.
West side. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22 is our fireworks ordinance, and this is Item A, consideration of waiving the rules requiring two considerations prior to final passage of an ordinance with respect to ordinance number 2025-14. Could I have a motion for considering that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Park and Leibold. We need a roll call on this?
Yep. Yep, and you need four to pass.
Thank you.
Smith.
No.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wasen.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Thank you. I forgot we had a protest vote in there. It startled me for a second. Item A is second and potentially final consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-14. This is an ordinance amending chapter 41.0, 41.10 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing the use and sale of fireworks. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions?
So basically, we have to do this to comply with state law, and the reason we're condensing it is just because we need to get it done by July 1st.
State law will be state law whether you pass this or not. This is to avoid, to have a match up with what state law requires, and staff recommends approval, just to avoid confusion as to the two. This one, we need three to pass.
Funny how the attorney's interpretation took longer to say than yours did, but well Well done. Thanks for covering us. Thanks for covering us. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Thank you, all. Motion carries four to one. And item 23 is our zoning ordinance amendment. Amendment in item A is consideration of waiving the rules requiring two considerations prior to final passage of an ordinance with respect to ordinance number 2025-15. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Leibold. Ryan, anything to add? Any comments?
I think it's just the same explanation as Grant from the other one. Yep.
Perfect. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Can you capture that answer for that response, please?
Oh, wait, you had a question.
I do, yeah.
Waving.
Mine, and I talked a little bit prior to this, but, you know, the state's purpose here was to allow ADUs.
I think you're going to wait till the next.
Yeah, the next.
Give us a moment.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. We still need, we need four affirmative on this one to move on to B. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Okay, let's move to item B, which is second potentially final consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-15. This is an ordinance amending the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, Chapter 165, governing zoning map amendments, Chapter 168 governing the use matrix table, and use is defined in use standards in Chapter 169 governing accessory structures and uses. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Leibold, thank you. Paul.
So B5 talks about, and I talked to Ryan about this earlier, you know, the intention of the state was to allow ADUs. And you made a, you know, a great point that if there's a detached garage, that because the language from the state wasn't clear, you know, we wouldn't want, let's just use a 3,000 square foot house as an example, that has a detached garage. What we don't want to have happen is 1,500, it can be 50% of the total square footage, 1,500 to be added on to the side of that detached two-car garage, which makes sense to me. What I don't, what doesn't make sense to me is not allowing, you know, someone that already has a detached garage to be able to go up. And so great, you know, great points that you made. I would just say, you know, in my opinion, I would rather see us instead of, you know, clamping down on that now. Because the point you made is a great point, I would like to see this change in a way that would allow, you know, if there was a thousand-foot square foot detached garage, that you could do a thousand-foot unit on top of it. If that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and let me just, the language is that Counselor Park is referring to is, and this is specifically for detached ADUs. And the ordinance, proposed ordinance says detached ADU shall be standalone structures and not attached in combination with any other structure. So to Counselor Park's point, yes, if you had a detached garage and wanted a structure above it, that wouldn't be allowed. The concern was, as you mentioned, I thought the language in the state law was a little ambiguous. And it wasn't clear to me as if somebody had, while that scenario does, seems fairly reasonable, although I'd argue, if you've seen a two-story ADU looking over another piece of property, that could be objectionable. I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about it because state law allows you to build a three-story ADU. Imagine that. And we have to allow that. The thing that I would be concerned with is if somebody had a thousand-square-foot ADU and then wanted to add a 1,500-square-foot ADU with your example, a 3,000-square-foot house, to have this monster of a detached garage on a small lot. That, that was the concern that we had. The other concern is we have limitations on detached accessory buildings like garages. If you have, a standard lot is like 800 square feet. And then if you have a non-garage outbuilding like a poolhouse or something, it's 600 square feet. So then does the combination of like, okay, I want to build, I'm allowed 1,500 square feet by state law. I'm only allowed a 600-square-foot poolhouse. Now I'm going to build a thousand-square-foot poolhouse and a 500-square-foot ADU. And so we just, we took a conservative approach that we think is consistent with state law. I think your points are extremely valid. It's just that the state law, I thought, wasn't super clear to us and didn't leave us with a ton of options. We can certainly come back once ordinances are passed and feel out community need or desire for these and tweak the ordinance as, you know, in the future.
So would it be possible to, you know, address what you're saying by changing the wordage here? As opposed to, you know, trying to pass this and then, and then come back, you know, and change something later? Couldn't we just, you know, address it now?
My suggestion would be, as Grant said, state law is going to be state law. And we're going to have to, that you just table it till the next meeting and we'll be past the first. And, you know, we'll just have to see what happens in that interim time period. You know, we're talking seven days. You know, your next meeting will be July 8th.
To directly answer your question, yes, you can, you can move right now to amend this ordinance to have language that you propose consistent with what you're, with what you want it to read with respect to detached ADUs, or I want to strike sub-paragraph five, or whatever it is you want to do. And then there could be a second and then a discussion on that motion and so on. You could do that now, or you can move to table it, or not. But, but yeah, to answer the limited question I asked is, could you do this now? Yes, you could, with the support of your fellow council members.
Yeah, my fear is while the ADU language is easy and you could, you could tweak B5, as you mentioned, we also altered language in the detached garage section of the accessory building section that I'd want to look at a little bit closer to make sure. You can't fix one without fixing the other.
So, you know, like I said, your point's totally valid, and I totally agree. One, you know, 1,500 square feet on the side of what's already a detached garage would be too much. But if there is a way that we could just say, you know, to tighten ours up so you could allow someone that had a detached garage to build something above it, but not, you know, on the side of it, and maybe it's going to be the same, it has to be the same square footage, you know, as the garage currently is. That's, that's what I would like to see. So I guess I would make a motion to table this until, I don't, I don't have any kind of a suggestion right now of, you know, wordage to change that. So I don't, an amendment wouldn't be appropriate now, but to table that maybe till the next meeting.
If I could just be.
Nope.
Thank you.
Pointed clarification.
You need a second.
You need a second before we can discuss. Seeing no second, the amendment fails.
That's it?
Okay. Now we can go back to the discussion. Are there any questions, Brian?
Yeah, just a clarification here. It says on our agenda, second and potentially final consideration.
It is, it is final, having approved A, five, nothing. This would be, this would be the final, yes.
Okay, that's what I, like, is there another reading that we have to, or?
You already waived that.
Okay, we waived that, thank you.
This would be the final. You, you could move to undo that.
No, no, I.
But I wouldn't.
Just wanted clarity.
And I think, Paul, the ideas and the direction that you have, I think, are valid. And I think there are things that we can probably tweak in this. But if you could give staff some time and some input on how that might look and allow them to bring that back. One of the things that I, I would prefer for us to at least be compliant in language that meets the July 1 start date for this. And even though it will be a week, anything could happen in there if we're not consistent. So I'm just looking for some consistency. I, again, didn't have a chance to vote on that, but I would have sat quiet also. We can amend this going forward. And I, and I trust that Russ heard what you're saying and is open to some suggestions, conversation about that.
I would enter in the conversation with past meeting cautions. I am voting in favor of this as being forced by the state to do so. But I still, the cautionary tales that I've shared with this group still remain. I would not be in favor of that particular language of what Paul is asking for, specifically for site, height, and response by, by our emergency services. So I won't rehash that, but I would not be in favor of that. So I want us to be very cautious as we move forward, Russ, that we're not going to allow things that are unsightly, that look terrible, that are going to be hard for us to respond to. We really need to be careful.
Yeah, the difficult part is the state has really limited our ability to do a lot of things.
But I think with things like this, we have, we have the ability to not allow additional of what the state is allowing, and that's my caution. I don't think we, I don't think we do. I think we stick with what the state's forcing us, and no more.
And Grant, you're confident that what the state requires, that this extra thing that we're doing?
I don't think anyone would ever describe me as confident in any situation. This is a reasonable interpretation of what, what we think the state law is. Until a court weighs in on this and has case law to fill in some of the gaps and the contours, you know, it's, it's anyone's guess. I mean, you ask a lawyer, the answer is going to be it depends. Do I think this is a reasonable reading? Yeah, I do. Past that, I can't. I can't give you anything more than a disclaimer.[1709.08]